I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for February 12, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Good evening, everybody. As far as holidays go, it's Abraham Lincoln's birthday and Charles Darwin's birthday. So happy birthday to those two gentlemen that were definitely controversial in their time, but did great things. It's also Extraterrestrial Visitation and Culture Day, but we won't talk about that one. Not as significant. Today, our consent agenda includes approval of the January 8, 2019 regular meeting minutes, approval of the December bank balances, budget report for period ending December 31, 2018, approval of the December check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for January 2019, resolution number 1155, support for enacting HR 530, reversing recent Federal Communications Commission, also called the FCC, actions relating to wireless facilities. The items on our regular meeting agenda include item number eight, accepting the 2018-2019 City of Gladstone fiscal audit; item number 11, update on Metro Affordable Housing Bond; item number 12, Gladstone Civic Center update; item number 13, accepting the Oregon Marine Board grant in the amount of $133,000 for the Meldrum Bar Boat Dock replacement; item number 14, appointment to the Budget Committee; item number 15, adopting the 2019-2021 City of Gladstone Budget Calendar; item number 16, City Council Liaison Appointments. The items on our Urban Renewal Agency meeting agenda include item number nine, approval of October 8, 2018 meeting minutes; and item 10, accepting the 2018-2019 Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency Fiscal Audit. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Here.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stempel?
Here.
Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
I have none, thank you.
Wonderful. We are going to begin the meeting with the Civilian Life Saving Award presented by interim Fire Chief Jeff Smith.
Counselors, Mayor, Mr. Bitts and staff, thank you for allowing us to do this presentation this evening. I have with me Ty Broman. He's our training and EMS officer, and he's pretty much set up and made all the contacts for this presentation, so I'm going to turn it over to Ty.
So, we'd like to present a couple of awards this evening. I will say right up front that we had a number of other Gladstone Fire members that were going to be recognized here tonight. Unfortunately for someone, they are actually out right now, saving another life in the course of a duty, and riding on the ambulance. So we will be a few people short. If it's okay with the council and the mayor, I'd like to kind of stand to the side so the public can hear as well. So, council, mayor, citizens of Gladstone, my name is Ty Broman, and I'm the training and EMS officer here at Gladstone Fire. Usually, if you are seeing us as the result of a 911 call, you or someone else is not having a good day. Cardiac arrest, heart attack, stroke, significant bleeding, and someone not breathing are but a few of the 911 emergencies we respond to when time is of the utmost importance. Specifically, in reference to cardiac or stroke events, with these situations, it is often said that time is muscle, or heart muscle, or time is brain. As emergency service professionals, the ideal outcome on these critical calls is when the person having the emergency receives quick, appropriate, and effective medical care and treatment, is transported to an appropriate facility that provides them definitive care, and receives any specialized care necessary to fix the problem that they're having, and then receive post-event care for stabilization and recovery. All of which ultimately leads to them being discharged from the hospital in a condition where they can continue living a meaningful, productive life with the friends and family that are so special to them. While we constantly strive for this goal, these outcomes are not always the case. Tonight, we will be recognizing both Gladstone citizens and emergency service professionals from different agencies for their part in a significant emergency call with the very outcome I just discussed attained. It is my honor to help be recognized for following individuals. Not present tonight is CCOM 911 dispatcher Fred Youngluth, Gladstone Engine 391 crew, Captain EMT Paramedic Pat Brost, then step forward. Engineer EMT Tim Atkinson, and firefighter EMT Zach Buchanan. Gladstone Police Officer 1 Henry 13, Officer Danny Day.
He's on the call right now.
And Officer 5 Henry 17, Desmond Wilson. American Medical Response Medic 275 Crew, Paramedic Alex Hall, and EMT Marissa Donahue. And then unable to join us tonight because I'm sure they are out on the same call that Officer Day is, is Gladstone Fire Squad 390 Crew, Captain EMT Intermediate Richard Newton, and Lieutenant Paramedic Gabe Wiggins. We would also like to invite Gladstone Citizen Sean Flett forward. Sean and Piper Flett, along with their children and Piper's mother Mary Jenkins, live at their home in Gladstone on Bridgewood Drive. On the evening of December 24, they were joined by Mary Jenkins' boyfriend Greg Smith, who was visiting from the Olympia, Washington area to celebrate Mary's birthday on December 24 and Christmas Day. Just before 3:30 on Christmas morning, Mary awoke to the sound of Greg taking strange, gasping breaths, which was clearly not normal. Mary tried to wake Greg, but he would not respond. Knowing something was very wrong, Mary screamed for help from the basement room where they were staying. Sean and Piper Flett, sleeping upstairs, were startled awake by the screams from Piper's mother, Mary. They instantly knew something was wrong and rushed downstairs to assist her. Finding Greg unresponsive in his bed, Piper grabbed her phone and dialed 911, while Sean checked Greg's breathing and searched for a pulse. At 3:30 in the morning, CCOM dispatcher Fred Youngluth answered an emergency call placed by Piper Flett. He quickly determined the nature of the emergency and confirmed their location. Just over a minute into this process, he had enough information to dispatch the appropriate emergency response unit to the Flett's location. Gladstone Fire and AMR received alert tones dispatching them to an echo response, which in our world is the most serious level of response, for a cardiac arrest situation. Fifty-six seconds after receiving the 911 call, the on-duty crew assigned to Station 390, which was here in Gladstone at the fire station that evening, which was Pat Brost, Tim Atkinson, and Zach Buchanan, responded to the Flett's residence. At about the same time, Medic 275's crew responded from their post-location in Oregon City. Back at the Flett residence, Piper had placed the emergency dispatcher on speaker phones of her husband Sean to communicate with the 911 dispatcher while attending to Greg. Fred, the dispatcher, guided Sean through a brief series of questions, ultimately recommending that Sean perform CPR. Thankfully, Sean had received previous CPR training and knew exactly what to do once the dispatcher told him this. While Sean was performing CPR, Piper went outside to flag down responders after briefly checking in on her children who were upstairs during his motion. At 3:35, three minutes after leaving the station, Engine 391 arrived on scene, along with Gladstone Police Officers Day and Wilson. Piper led these first-arriving responders downstairs to Greg's location, with Engine 391's crew immediately taking over CPR for Sean, while also providing ventilation and applying a defibrillator. Gladstone Police Officers Day and Wilson immediately began moving the sofa and other furniture to give fire and EMS personnel the additional space they needed to perform the work they had to do. AMR Medic 275 arrived on scene approximately two minutes after the fire department initiated its DLS life-saving care, and began providing their advanced life-support level care. At 3:37 that morning, about the same time the AMR crew was joining Engine 391's crew, Gladstone Fire Squad 390 responded from the fire station with rescue fire, excuse me, rescue personnel responding from home. These responding members were Captain Newton and Paramedic Wiggins, who are out on their call this evening. When they arrived, Medic 275 and Engine 391 had achieved ROS, or Return of Spontaneous Circulation, which means he had a pulse. Fire and EMS responders, along with assistants from the Gladstone Police Officers, transferred the patient up the stairs and into the ambulance, all while providing continued care. The ambulance crew often needs additional help and needs to take fire personnel with them to the hospital when caring for a critical patient. The crew from Squad 390, being an EMT Intermediate and a Paramedic, accompanied AMR's crew while transporting Greg to Kaiser-Sonny Side Hospital. Kaiser-Sonny Side was the cardiac care center, where Greg received the immediate and advanced level specialty care if needed. I'm happy to say that four days later, he was discharged from the hospital and returned to his home in Olympia, Washington, to continue his recovery. Unfortunately, Greg was not able to join us tonight for a couple of reasons, but we do have Sean, and then in the back, Piper and Mary. In talking with Sean and Piper after the event, the Flett's described the actions of these emergency responders of a rapid professional and rapid response. They stated there was nothing they would have changed about the response and the care received from the emergency personnel that assisted them that night. Tonight, on behalf of Gladstone Fire Department and the community of Gladstone, I am proud to award our first responders with the Secunda Vita Coin. This coin is only awarded to first responders that care for a patient who is found in cardiac arrest, essentially deceased at that time, who receives life-saving care, is revived, and ultimately is discharged from the hospital so they can go on continuing living their life. We thank them for their teamwork and cooperation in performing care that was greater than they could have provided on their own, and in the manner in which they performed their The other award I am very pleased to present tonight is to Citizen Sean Flett, which, as the council said, is the Citizen Life Saving Award. It is presented to Sean Flett in recognition of the life-saving CPR he provided to Greg Smith that morning on December 25, 2018. Sean, congratulations. Thank you. I am confident that without the actions of these men and women, that Greg Smith may not be here today, but we're very fortunate, and I know Mary is, that he is with us. So, I would also highly commend Sean for not only taking the time to learn CPR, which he originally did back as a Boy Scout, then in the Navy, and then annually, every year, as a grid operator for Pacific Corps, but I hope he serves as an example to others in our community of the importance for learning CPR, and that you never know when you may have to use it to save someone you care about. Thank you, Sean. And thank you all, you guys, for your hard work and dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll wait till they all filter out. I thought they were all stained.
The audits.
Even you.
The audits.
Sorry.
We did. We should have done them at the very end. So, before we start, I would like to say a few words regarding the City Council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been so many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. And that doesn't mean that our personal beliefs have changed, it's just that we decided that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal and state level, then filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead, we have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. Recent elected official and ethics training has made that crystal clear. I want you to know, we appreciate you taking the time to come here and participate in this process. I would like all of you to respect the desire of others to hear what we're talking about, so if you could keep your side discussions to a minimum, that would be great, and please turn everybody, all of us up here to, turn our phones off. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging. I hope all of you can help us do that. Thank you. Audience participation. As I mentioned in the last two meetings, our agenda format has changed a little bit. Well, now we will now have business from the audience at the end of the meeting. However, we still allow discussion or audience participation during the individual agenda items. In order to do this, we need you to fill out the yellow card, as I mentioned before the meeting started, and get that up to Tammy here. We allow three minutes for your comments, both during the agenda items and business from the audience. Thank you. First item is the consent agenda. Any discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
Motion was made by Counselor Neese and seconded by Counselor Mercero. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passed. Next item is correspondence.
We have none.
All right. So, we begin our regular agenda, item number eight, which is accepting the 2018-2019 City of Gladstone Fiscal Audit.
Mayor and council, good evening. I'd like to introduce Danny Rose from Marina &amp; Company, one of the partners there, and she will discuss and answer any questions that you may have about our financial statements in the audit for the actuary of 2017-18.
2017.
We can't hear. We could use the line.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. So, it's the 2017-2018. Okay. All righty.
Honorable Mayor and council, we are happy to report that we have completed the audit for the city for fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. We issued our report with an unqualified or queen opinion, which is the highest level of opinion you can receive. There were no findings or issues noted, so all good news for the city. There are a couple of things that I always like to call to those charged with governance attention. The first being that there was a new Governmental Accounting Standards Board pronouncement that was implemented during the fiscal year, GASB 75, which covers post-employment benefits, basically retiree health benefits. And so, if you were comparing last year's statements to this year's statements, you would see some differences. On page 12 is where you would see, where you would see it first come in, which is the Statement of Net Position. This GASB did for OPEB basically what GASB 68 did for pension a few years ago, and I know we've talked about that in the past. But as you look at the Statement of Net Position, you will see now kind of almost halfway through down the page, there's now a deferred outflow related to OPEB, a OPEB liability, and a deferred inflow related to OPEB. So this new GASB really added a new liability for the city, about $555,000, which does seem like a large liability, but just like the net pension liability, the important piece here is that the city is paying their required contributions annually, which the city is. And these numbers come from calculations done by actuaries, so as long as the city is making those required payments, they should have no problem meeting any future liabilities. Another thing I like to call attention to is the fact that there are some estimates in the financial statements. Unlike cash and bank, which we can confirm down to the dollar, things like depreciation is an estimate because we are estimating the length of useful life for a car or a building. Another one for the city is compensated absences, accrued vacation, vacation payable. Those are calculated on current wages, so as employees get COLA increases or raises, that liability can increase slightly. And then finally, the two largest estimates are the net pension liability and the net OPEB liability, which again, calculated by actuaries and provided to the city. The final thing I always like to point out, the very end of the statements you will find on page 83 is our report, the independent auditors' report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting, on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with Oregon State Regulation. So a really long title on a report that's basically what the Oregon State Legislature has mandated that municipal auditors look at during their reviews and audits of municipalities. So there are certain things that we look at. Some of the bigger things are your budget. Not only are you under budget, but are you following all the Oregon budget law as far as the process that you go through? ORS 279, compliance with purchasing and contracts, another thing we look at, and highway tax funds that come in, that's another big one that we look at, and are those funds being spent on allowable costs? So, we look at all these, all the things that are required by statute, and I'm happy to report again that there were no findings or any issues of non-compliance with this. So, like I said in the beginning, all good news for the city this year, and all of the credit goes to Kathy and Jackie and her team. It takes a lot of hard work, and, you know, we take a lot of their time when we come in, and they provided us with everything that we needed and asked for, and we're just wonderful to work with. So, a very, very smooth audit from our standpoint, but I'm here to answer any questions, should you have any.
Any questions?
Only a comment. I believe that's the first time in eight to nine years that I've been on the council that there was no findings.
You're probably correct. I don't know for sure on the year, but they're, yeah.
So maybe you missed something.
You've got a really good team in place.
Yeah. If I might, so the only thing that I see is that we had the 3566 in the Stormwater Fund, right? And that's just a deficit to sit in the budget.
Yes. And that is not a finding, that is just something that we call to attention, you know, to-
It's just there.
It's just there.
Okay.
If you saw it grow year over year over year, then it would be something you'd want to address.
I mean, that was the only thing that I saw that you guys pulled out of that, other than-
Yeah.
And with that in mind, that's a brand-new fund that was just created, you know, year before, year before last.
Right.
So, staff had no idea as to any, you know, what incomes or expenditures. So, to be starting, you know, brand-new and only being, you know-
Thirty-five hundred.
Yeah. I think is-
That is great.
Yeah. Phenomenal.
Any other questions? Staff comments?
No.
Would someone like to make, oh, first, no ethics issues with us approving the audit or not approving the audit?
No. It's just a report as what the auditors found. No one's got a financial interest in the results of that.
So, we're good. Just wanted to make sure.
So, one other thing which I did bring up, the Audit Committee met about a week and a half ago on this, and I brought it up then, and I feel it's only fair to bring it up again tonight, is that there was a little concern that the Audit Committee hadn't gotten the material until just a couple of days, it was a draft a couple of days before the meeting and the actual, the night of. So, I'm hoping next year that they will have more time to dig through it, and, because there was, you know, there was, even though it was kind of short, they had some good questions, but they didn't have any concerns and had recommended.
So, it was just two, they had two days?
Something like that. I think it came out on, it was emailed on a Tuesday, and our meeting was a Thursday.
Very short-term.
Or, yeah.
We apologize for that.
And you did, and that's appreciated.
The intention in the future is to give much more lead time.
And as I mentioned then, that I'd be going through it over the next week and a half, which I did, and it looks good.
Of course. We have, yeah, no doubt there.
That's approved. But we, yeah, and I'll make a comment. I mean, Kathy, you've done a great job since you've been here. You really have, and you've-
For sure.
You've made us, you've made the citizens, as well as the council, aware of everything that's been going on, and there's been accountability all the way through. So, I just want to say thank you for what you're doing.
It's been my pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah. So, also too, something that I've always asked for over the, you know, the years, even before getting on the council, was a letter to management. And, I mean, back in the day, it would be three, four pages long of concerns that the auditor, you know, you guys are the ones that were here before then, and there isn't one this year.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, just the only letter is the standard letter to those charged with governance that is required, and then, like you said, the letter to management, or we call the AUC 265 letter. There was, there was none this year, so that's why you didn't get as much this year as you've gotten in the past.
That is, that's good.
Yes. Amazing. All right.
I'd like to move that we accept the 2017-2018 City of Gladstone Fiscal Audit.
I will second that.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Accepted. Thank you very much.
That's a good one.
Oh, okay. I need to have someone make a motion to adjourn to the Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn to the-
Urban-
Urban renewal agency meeting.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Neese, seconded by Counselor Reisner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We are now adjourned to the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. All right. So, first is approval of October 8, 2018, meeting minutes.
I move that we approve the, which ones?
October 8, 2018.
Oh, yeah, there is. October-
Eight.
I've got ninth here.
On this, on the agenda, it's eight.
I know, but at the top of the minutes says-
So, is it October 8 or October 9?
Nine. Sorry, I just- Sorry, I just caught the...
Meeting minutes are October the 9th.
On the 9th, okay.
So move that we accept the Renewal Agency's meeting minutes of October 9th, Urban Renewal Agency, 2018.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Councilor Reisner, seconded by Councilor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting minutes have been approved. Item number 10 is accepting the 2000, is it still the 2017-2018? 2017-2018 Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency fiscal audit. Staff?
All right, so continuation, yes.
Continuation.
Just like the city, we completed our audit for the urban renewal with a clean opinion, unmodified opinion. There were no findings or issues noted for the urban renewal. Unlike the city, their GAZB 75 did not apply to the urban renewal. And the only estimate that affects the urban renewal is depreciation. We did the same requirements for the state legislature for the urban renewal that we did for the city. So again, you'll see that same report at the end of the urban renewal financial statements, looked at the same things, or the things that apply for the urban renewal, and no findings and no issues of noncompliance. So a clean audit for the urban renewal as well. Questions on that?
Any questions?
Well, if there isn't any, I'll... With that, I'll move that we accept the 2017-2018 Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency fiscal audit.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilor Reisner, seconded by Councilor Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Urban Renewal Agency fiscal audit for 2017-2018 has been accepted. Thank you very much.
And Mayor, I'm just going to, just for the record, note that the roll call for the council meeting carries over to your agency board meeting as well.
Okay, thank you.
Just so that's clear.
So I need a motion to adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting and reconvene to our regular agenda.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting and go back to our regular agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Councilor Tracy and seconded by Councilor Todd and Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now back to the regular agenda. The next item is number 11, update on Metro Affordable Housing Bond.
Good evening, city councilors, Mayor Stumpel and Administrator Betts. It looks like she's getting our presentation up. Does everybody have handouts if they needed them? I hope they do. My name is Jill Smith. Thank you. I am the Director of Housing for Clackamas County's Department of Health, Housing and Human Services.
And my name is Chuck Robbins. I'm the Director of Community Development, Clackamas County.
Thank you for inviting us here. We're excited to talk to you. Really quickly, before I dive into the presentation, I just have to tell you that my mom was saved from a cardiac arrest by a group of folks very similar to this about 20 years ago, and she went on to live a very long, happy life. And I'm so grateful for folks that, you know, serving the police and the fire and citizens. But no CPR, she wouldn't be alive today without the same group of folks. So it really touched my heart, and I wanted you to know that the work we're going to talk about today is really talking about lifesaving work. In the last few weeks, when we've had all this terrible weather, we have had over 230 people staying in our warming shelters across the county, which are just churches volunteering to help with people they're volunteering to oversee overnight. And they're just overnight, they're from about, I think, like 7:00 or 8:00 a.m. in the morning, they, people have to leave. But that is not necessarily related to this, but I just wanted to point that out. There's a real serious problem with housing in our community, which is why the Metro bond was presented and passed by our region, which is pretty exciting. And so Chuck and I wanted to take the time to talk to you a little bit about the bond, how it's working, how it could impact Gladstone, and most importantly, we want to hear from you and your citizens, and the citizens from all over the county. Because whether you're Washington County, Multnomah County, or Clackamas County, each area is very different, and we have an opportunity to make the bond work based on what our community needs. And this is part of the community outreach process that we're just starting. So first of all, what does it mean specifically for Clackamas County? It means that we're going to get $116 million that can be used in only very specific ways. We can purchase land to build housing, affordable housing on. We can use it to construct new housing, and we can use it also to purchase and renovate existing housing, making it affordable, putting affordability, long-term restrictions on that housing. So you can acquire, rehabilitate, something that's in place to preserve it. That's a strategy some communities are taking. The next, thank you Chuck. The next slide shows the implementation timeline that we're working under. It's early right now. We're in the spring. We're in the point where we're negotiating with Metro regarding what our local community implementation strategy will look like. A big part of that involves lots of meetings, but it also involves tremendous amount of community outreach and hearing from citizens. So we want to talk to our jurisdictional partners. We send out, you know, a request for, please invite us to your city council meetings. Let us talk to you, let us hear from you. We'll be doing extensive community outreach to schools. We want to hear from low-income residents. We want to hear from all residents. I think that this housing crisis, from my own personal experience, I have children, grown children, who are really struggling. You know, they're paying $1,800 a month in rent, and they have, you know, a little family of four. They're struggling. And how can you save for a house when you're paying that kind of rent? This is impacting all of us. I'm sure you all have similar stories. Once we get to the point where we've done this extensive outreach through this, and we have our adopted implementation strategy, it'll go before the Board of County Commissioners to be adopted, then it will go to Metro Council to be adopted. And again, this is our local strategy for Clackamas County. That will then inform an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement, and the way that we move forward to select, you know, where projects are located. What will they look like? You know, what does the community and the residents want have to be reflected by what is developed as a result of all of this work? And we're hoping that that actually, you're going to start seeing the funding going out the door and developments identified and work beginning as early as the summer. We have every intention of doing this quickly. Eligible communities are within the Metro boundary. They are the ones who issued the bond. Metro is not a housing expert. They have stated that clearly several times, which is why the housing authorities and the jurisdictional partners that have a community development department have been asked to administer these funds and create the housing, the housing piece of it. Metro is only administering the bond, which they do have experience with. Unfortunately, a large, large portion of our need is outside the Metro boundaries in Clackamas County. There's communities with just tremendous poverty outside of this area. So this does give us a great opportunity to help folks that live within the Metro bond, but it also gives us an opportunity with this additional funding to target our resources we would have used otherwise, you know, within this boundary, outside, places like Estacada and Malala and Sandy, where we can't use the bond fund, we can use other funding. And that's a very intentional decision that we intend to move forward. So where will the housing be located? I already touched on this. It has to be within the Metro boundaries. Siding will be established in a multi-step process. It'll be part of the plan. The Board of County Commissioners actually on, I think it's the 21st, if I remember correctly, will be asked to help us establish guiding values that will lead this process. They're speaking also, just as you said, Mayor, for the residents of this county, and those values should represent those folks. As staff, we're saying, here's some ideas, and we're just starting that discussion with them. What should those values look like? I think I have covered the rest of this. One thing that I'm going to touch on really briefly before I turn it over to Chuck to go a little bit deeper into detail is readiness will play a factor in this. We have every intention of acting. There is a crisis. There is a housing crisis, and we need to act quickly. Every dollar needs to be committed by seven years maximum. We hope to do much better than that. We also hope to exceed our housing development goals and show the taxpayers that this is a good investment of their dollars. And I have Chuck take you a little bit deeper.
Thank you for having us here tonight. So I'm going to go a little bit deeper into the bond itself and kind of talk about how we arrived at that $116 million that Jill mentioned at the very beginning, and then talk about some of the goals that she discussed. So first of all, the Metro bond itself is estimated to raise about $652 million. The percentage that Clackamas County gets is based upon our percent of the assessed value of properties within Clackamas County and within the Metro bond, or within the Metro boundary. So that's roughly, what I've got here is 20.82%. So that number's important because that's the percentage of everything that Clackamas County is going to have to meet when we talk about, you know, how much money do we get? And how many units do we have to create? I'm going to back up a little bit. I mentioned, you know, that we received the bond money. So that was the first thing that was voted on, is the fact that, you know, they were actually going to raise money to build affordable housing. The other thing that was voted on was a constitutional amendment. That becomes really important because it impacts the way we can use the funds and allows us to leverage beyond what we could have originally. With just the bond money, we can raise the money, but if we were to build any housing, that housing would have to remain in public ownership. That means we would have to use 100% of our bond money to build these units. Every affordable housing project in Oregon and probably across the United States has used something called low-income housing tax credits. This is a federal program, it's administered by the state, can pay anywhere between 30% to 80% of the cost of development. That becomes, you know, the number-one fund source for construction. Without a constitutional amendment, we would not be able to use those tax credits. And the reason is that without the constitutional amendment, as I mentioned, we have to keep the property in public ownership with low-income housing tax credits. Those funds are moved out of public ownership for a period of 15 years and reside in ownership by the investors. So by having this constitutional amendment, we're now able to take our funds, combine them with low-income housing tax credits, and leverage a significant amount of money. As a result of that, we're able to create more than 2,500 housing units throughout the region. If we did not have the constitutional amendment, that number would have been closer to about 1,300. So it's quite a significant amount. As part of that 2,500 units, Clackamas County, again, using that 20.82%, we're going to be responsible for building at least 812 new units. Now, as Jill mentioned, you know, that's just the goal. We expect that, and, you know, we're going to push ourselves to do better than that. Of those 812 units, 40% of them have to be available to families at or below 30% of area median income. And I'll go into that in just a moment. But, you know, that becomes, you know, a significant target for us. In addition, about half of those units, 406 units, have to be two-bedrooms or larger. So we're really focusing on larger families. And that all of the units have to be available at or below 80% of area median income. The majority of that is at the 60% level. So I'm throwing out a lot of numbers at you, but I just wanted to kind of give you a feel. What we're trying to do here is build housing to assist what we consider the low and moderate income population in our communities. So I mentioned the percentages. So this, it's based on a sliding scale. Let's just look at a family size of three, which is the average family in Clackamas County. If you're extremely low-income, that means you're at about 30% of area median income. Your annual income's about $22,000. If you're at 50%, you're making $36,650 a year for that family of three. And at 80%, it goes up to $58,600. So again, a lot of numbers. Sometimes it's easier to put a little bit of, you know, put some faces to that. So when we're talking about that 60% to 80%, those are generally, you know, firefighters that just get started, elementary school teachers. That's who falls into that category. That 30% to 60%, office administration assistants, paramedics, mail carriers, these people with full-time jobs, but they're not making enough money. And as Jill mentioned, you know, a family of fours may be paying $1,800 a month for housing. You know, a one-bedroom is probably running for about $1,200 or $1,300 a month now. It is just not affordable. And when you get down into that 0% to 30% AMI, those are the people that the housing authorities, you know, work with exclusively. You know, they're making, you know, what are we saying here? $2,800? You know, $28,000 a year. Generally, what we're finding is these are individuals that, maybe a single parent who has a, just a regular job, you know, paying $1,200, $1,300 an hour and not being able to make ends meet. So that's who we're trying to build these housing units for. So where are we now? And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Jill and let her kind of talk about where we are now, and then we'll open it up for questions.
I think I kind of touched on this already. We're working with Metro, negotiating our strategy to make sure it's very focused on what Clackamas County needs. The local implementation strategy, our deadline to get that completed and approved is July 1st. Following that, we will be eligible to receive funding and, you know, actually engage in development activities. Something that's really important to Clackamas County is that we have a lot of nonprofit, for-profit partners at the table. We can't do this alone. We don't want to do this alone. So you'll see in the coming months, opportunities for development partners or jurisdictions that have an idea of something that they want developed in their community to apply for this bond funding. That'll be part of what's spelled out in our implementation plan. I wanted, I think what comes next, I think I just went over that with you. We want to start issuing actual commitment letters to projects in the summer of 2019. Metro did offer us the opportunity, each jurisdiction, Clackamas County, Washington County, the various folks involved in receiving this fund, to identify an early project if they had an interest or found something that was really appealing to them, real opportunity. And they actually said to us, if you can come up with an early project, and you're ready to go, we will go ahead and issue you funding before July 1st, before your implementation strategy is approved formally, because we need housing. We're acting in a time of urgency. And the reason I'm bringing this up to you is we did identify a potential early project that we are in negotiations with the owner to purchase in Gladstone. And it's a very exciting opportunity, and we intend to, if we can make, there's some land use issues associated with it. If we can work those out, we really truly hope that that will be the beta project and the first project that comes online, I think, for the entire region. And this building, hopefully you're all familiar with it, it's on Webster Road in Gladstone. It used to be a behavioral health residential treatment center.
Yeah.
Sitting vacant... Sitting vacant right now, not being used at all. We have a vision of turning it into, with your support and the residents of this community's support, of course, housing for very low-income seniors. That is what we'd like to do with it. Supported housing, which means there's services on the site. I'm, me and Chuck, we're a part of a much larger department. We're part of Health, Housing, and Human Services. So we also have a vision, this is still visionary right now, so keep that in mind, of placing a health clinic within the building as well, that could potentially not only serve the folks that are living there, but the folks that are in the area around it. So right now, I think I'm going to let Chuck talk about the land use concerns that we have.
So as Jill mentioned, this was formerly a behavioral health center. It was residential. It's been, I think it was constructed, boy, I want to say, in the '60s or '70s, something like that, and has been always working under a conditional use permit that allowed, you know, a residential function there. And so I think that there have been two or three organizations that have owned that building. So we've been working with the Planning Department to kind of check it, you know, what could be built there. And, you know, what we've been told is the conditional use permit's still in place, and that if we look at making it residential and keeping with the senior population, that that conditional use permit will probably, you know, still apply. But we still have to go through, you know, the hearing. We will be, of course, working with the city, working with the residents to getting their feedback in on that. But overall, our, you know, our plan is to, you know, turn that in. If you've looked at it, it's my favorite visual. You look at it, it looks like the flux capacitor from, you know, from Back to the Future, but it's three wings. And the plan is to put in about 50 residential units there. And then take advantage of some of the additional resources that are there, like a commercial kitchen. So there's things that could be done with the commercial kitchen. There is some, you know, exam space. There is some meeting space. So it may be a clinic, but we also might be able to bring other services, social services and things, and have them offered on-site. So very, we're very excited about this. We're just, we're just in the kind of the process of going through our due diligence and, you know, working with the property owners to eventually secure that building and get started.
Oh, I, something that we failed to share with you is kind of, how in the world would you fit 50 units in there? I can kind of see you questioning that. And what our vision is, is single-room occupancy units, if you're familiar with those. There is not one SRO building in Clackamas County.
Really?
There's not. It's a huge gap, which is also something that, when I heard about this building, really made me feel like, you know, drawn to it. And the fact that there are so many extremely low-income seniors, that's any senior earning Social Security would qualify to live there. How quickly do you think we could fill that building?
So fast.
So, fingers crossed, bond funding would help us with this.
So right now, the city's being sensitive to the fact that they are in negotiations for a land sale agreement. If everything does work through, then I'd like to circle back with the council to see who would be interested in partnering with community engagement to talk about this project specifically, and also to make sure that we could target seniors in Gladstone as a priority for this type of project. That's so cool.
That's everything we have. Can we take, we're happy to take questions.
I have one question. The bond, they said the allocation of money is going to be quick, but you said that it must be committed within seven years. That doesn't mean the projects have to be completed within seven years, just that the funds are committed?
Correct.
Okay. So then a lot of this may not be so quickly, quickly done.
You know, I've just been getting into development recently. You know, I spent most of my time building sidewalks, sewers, and, you know, senior centers. It goes much quicker. We've been working three and a half years on one project, and, you know, broke ground, and we probably won't build the first building, or have the first building up until May or April. So it takes a long time. So that's why the commitment is so important.
Okay.
And what we mean by that is that we've identified the land, you know, we've secured the funding, and we have a plan for what we want to build there.
It's five to seven years, too. I would have a preference, it's five.
Absolutely.
So that's what we'll strive for.
Do you see a lot of projects percolating to the top that are just about ready to start the process?
We have a lot of folks calling us and knocking on our doors. Until we have our implementation strategy, and we hear from the community and the residents, and we know what Clackamas County wants, we don't know which one of those might be the right one. But there's a lot of interest out there in the nonprofit and the for-profit development community.
Yeah, the key, of course, is land.
Right.
And, you know, where do we have the land? Now, the Housing Authority of Clackamas County is in a good position. We have a lot of land that is underdeveloped. You know, we have four housing parks. You know, it's about 45 acres, and there's only 400 units on those acres, you know, on that acreage. So there's an opportunity for us to, you know, to have some quick wins. So a portion of this would be set aside to help, you know, build on those locations. But then the rest of it is, we're really interested in getting out, you know, into the communities and build housing where we haven't built housing before.
And one of the values that's being presented to our commission on the 21st is that we really want to invest across the entire Metro boundary. We feel like people should have, the low-income people should have, be placed in opportunity areas, near good schools, near food, you know, near opportunity, and not all densely located in one place. So that's a value that I think our commission will align with. I've heard them talk about it many times.
So I have a question. So when we're talking about not-for-profit and for-profit developers, what does a for-profit developer scenario look like? Is, and I'm going to add some of the questions that I'm going to ask. Are we talking about land and building being titled over to a for-profit developer who then turns it over to somebody else in a land sale later on? Or, I'm just trying to understand how we're controlling the market, right?
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay. So we've got a perfect example. I'd mentioned, I think, you know, the three and a half years I've been working on getting a project, I've been going, it's called Rosewood Terrace. It's 212 units located on Audi Road at the intersection of 205. That's being developed by a for-profit developer. So in that particular case, what's happened is they have partnered with the Housing Authority. We're a 25% owner in everything, and so we kind of share in all of the profits. And then we have a restrictive land use covenant on that property-
Thank you.
-that says that that property will remain affordable at or below 60% of area median income for a period of 60 years.
Okay. That's a great, and so is that attached to the bond, or is that something that the county, that's the covenant that the county puts together as their responsibility for stewardship of the bond monies, or is it attached to the Metro bond?
I'm sure it'll be attached to the bond. It'll also be attached to any tax credit funding that we leverage it with.
Yeah. Metro has identified 60 years as their affordability period.
Yeah.
So I would expect that anything that we build, whether it's for-profit or nonprofit, will have that same covenant.
I would say that, once you get the information, and do you guys know where Metro's going to land on the covenants and the restrictions, that it be pronounced very loudly to the public, because I know that inside of this Portland city limits, there is some buzz about, again, developers being put in a position where they're able to take advantage of public monies to go forward. And whether it's real or not, it's always important to get out ahead of those kinds of, you know, disparaging comments about development.
Good, good, Council. Thank you.
Right. Well, and I think that, you know, one of the advantages that we have because of that constitutional amendment will be, you know, using bond money along with low-income housing tax credits. And low-income housing tax credits have some very, you know, strong protections-
Yeah.
-you know, for that. So, you know, it identifies what's the maximum developer fee, which is basically a profit that you can take and things like that. So I think that there's a lot of controls in place.
Any other questions?
Well, I would just like to add one last thing, is we're here to help you. So if you have ideas, if you hear that there's property that's available, you know, don't feel like the city has to go and develop this themselves, that you don't have to go this alone. What I would suggest is you contact Jill Smith at the Housing Authority. We have, I am really excited to say, you know, one of the top housing developers on staff, and really, they can help you define the project. So again, we want to be a resource to you. If, you know, if you're ready to go, we're ready to go.
Okay. You're serious? We can call you up and-
You can call her.
-throw up some ideas?
That used to be my job. Now it's her job.
Yeah, we're swapping.
Yeah, we're swapping jobs. So, yeah, this is, this is great. But you can call me, too, and then I'll give you Jill's number.
Okay.
And, yeah, there's going to be resources, updated information posted at that site. So check it out as you have questions, and you can always call.
So this is affordable housing, has nothing to do with emergency sheltering. It's just affordable housing.
And it's new housing.
New housing.
You're trying to create new housing. So it's building new. However, if there is a market apartment complex that is for sale, we could use these funds to purchase that and rehabilitate it, and then convert it with, you know, with, again, a covenant to be affordable.
Buy down the rent.
Yeah. So basically, we're taking an affordable unit and may, or an unaffordable unit, a market unit, and making it affordable. That also counts as a new unit.
And they'll give you the, you're allowed, the allowable on that is the rehab, so you can do some of the work to bring it up to the standard that you're talking about.
In regards to your question, Mayor Temple, the Boree County Commissioners, about a year ago, put out a new general fund to address housing and homelessness. And we just barely finished scoring several applications, and there were a couple that are very creative ideas that are addressing homelessness. And there's also a task force that is going to be presenting ideas on what the county should do differently in partnership with our cities to help those who are on the street slow, working five to seven years to develop new housing, because, you know, what we're doing right now is not sufficient.
No.
And I do think that in the downtown revitalization plan that you guys reviewed in January, there was one recommendation that we have communications with the owners of the SDA property-
Yes.
-to talk about what are their intentions with that property, and that's something that I can follow up with Jill on, too.
Well, I can think of two properties, too, that would fit the scenario that you just described, Chuck. It's great, so.
Mm-hmm.
One very close to us right now.
Mm-hmm. So we will be calling you, for sure. No more questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And definitely keep us in the loop and let us know what we can do to help support it.
Definitely will.
And I appreciate, Ms. Smith, the help you gave me with our gentleman. I tried to reach out to him. We're working on it.
Marvin, welcome. Anytime you need help, please reach out.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is the Gladstone Civic Center update. Oh, there's Kim. I was wondering where you were. Thought you were here.
Hi. Here's your place pass.
She's still partying.
Here's the knife.
Gosh.
Thank you. They stopped, huh? They stopped, okay?
I haven't heard.
On every call back in the day, it was going on, this iron went off because the pagers worked only maybe half the time. And so then, you can hear all of the cities.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
My health is very-
I know.
-through it, and I never even woke up. Oh, my gosh.
I know. It's kind of funny. I was, you know, lost the way.
Thank you, City Council, Mayor.
All right.
So this evening, we have our project manager, Kim Knox, with us to give the council a brief update before our upcoming open house that we're having on February 20th. So I'm going to have her go over just some brief updates for you.
Great. Thanks, Jackie. And a couple of new faces, just so you, so I can introduce myself to you guys. My name's Kim Knox. I work with Shields, O'Blatch, Johnson, and we're a project management firm, and we've been working with the city for about a year now on helping to select and get a contractor or a design-build team under contract and off to the races, which they are, and they're running strong, and some good progress has been made. So like Jackie said, the purpose today is to kind of give you a little bit of a sneak preview of some things that we'd like to, that we'll be taking to the community on the 20th. They've all received the notice, is that right, of the community?
The public open-
The public open house, yes. So what we want to do is kind of walk you through some of the information that's going to be shared that night to give you an idea of what we're going to be talking about. So what you see on the screen now is the, is a view from Fortland Avenue of the proposed building. Last time we were here, we kind of talked about the general makeup of the building, and what this does is now starts translating that into some design information for you.
So here, just for, essentially, you've got the police department side here, this is the city hall side here, this is Fortland Avenue here, and right now, this is supposed to be one entrance to go into the avenues room that we have planned in there. So that's what you're seeing, what you're drawing right there. And then this one is really more for landscape purposes. You've still got your police department and your city hall on this side. And as you can see, the public parking and Dunaway. I believe this one is pretty similar to what you have already seen before, prior to that, but we did want to outline the watch street improvement that will be going to the planning and as well, through that. And this one is the public parking lot. This is the front of the Civic Center. This is the police department side here. This is the public entrance in the middle. And this, over here, is the council chambers, and that is the city hall side. So Dartmouth is here, Fortland Avenue is behind, and that's what you're seeing.
No, even Dunaway.
Dunaway.
Sorry.
Dunaway.
It's a big building.
You were just testing them, right? Ouch. They go fast too fast.
That's fine. So this one, we're giving you some more detail. We're pretty close to pushing out the floor plan. The police department side, we're being a little bit more generic with steering reasons, but once we file for our building permit, obviously, the detailed detail will be made public. I kind of want to share with you the city hall perspective and the public entrance, and kind of what we're going to be focusing on in the next open house. The point of entry is to come in here, and one of the enhancements that the city council chose is to have a wedge open lobby, and that's what you're seeing right here. So this is going to be a lobby and a gallery option here. So when people come in, right here is where the court and the city hall chambers is going to be. Back here is kind of a judge and city council office space, conference room, bathroom, multipurpose room, back in this area here. And what we're trying to do for efficiencies of service is to provide a centralized reception area here, so that when people come in, we're going to have the municipal court and the utility billing here. And we're keeping it kind of flexible right now until we know how we're going to want this space got up. The idea is for somebody to come into city hall and be greeted by a receptionist that can help them pay their court line or their utility billing. And then back here, we're still not sure, but you're going to have finance back here, city administrator, city recorder, and HR. And then we'll have a conference room for the city council and our coffee room. And this right here, we filled as our gold nugget. This is the community room, a thousand-square-foot space that we're going to have for anybody that wants to reserve that room to have either the city committee meetings or outside agency meetings, to have that space available to the public. And then we'll also be able to use the court and the city council for multipurpose as well. And then just very briefly, on the police department side, you still, you can come in this way, or you can come in this way, but the general- come in this way, or you can come in this way, but the general police reception area is right here. And as you can see, the flow for administration and operations, and then this is where they'll be going out. We'd like to invite the city council, if you want to see the details, to meet with the police chief or myself, and we can show you those plans. But for the public, we did want to give a little bit more detail here for you tonight, just to kind of see how the flow of that will be going. And at the open house, what we really want to focus on is we still have a little bit of money left for some enhancements. So we want to show the public the building designs of what we have, and then give them an opportunity to tell us how they'd like that public space to be used and decorated. And I shared with you that we had a meeting with the Gladstone Historical Society, and we got some really good insights as to how we can give a historical perspective to Gladstone there. And we'd really like to get the community engaged on that process.
Great. Thanks. Were there any questions on the plans before I go in? Scope, schedule, budget. That's what project managers do. So that's all my three things. So scope, this is what we're talking about here. Were there any questions about the building at all?
I'm hearing that you're saying we're going to get more detail about the police building, that portion of this project.
And that's what I'm saying. I think one-on-one meetings with the police chief and the lieutenant, who are part of the project management team, we'd like to have those with elected officials, if you choose.
I think we choose.
Mm-hmm. Yep. All right. So on the schedule front, there's three kind of big public pieces in front of us. One is the community meeting that we've talked about on the 20th, at which point Jackie and I are intending to do a brief introduction. But basically, it is the design-build team's show, to share with the community their plans, talk about kind of their approach they're taking on the contracting side, and share that with the community. And then talk a little, and get that, and do some questions and answer period that night as well. So we're kind of there as the front piece, and then the design-build team will carry the bulk of that conversation. Then on the 19th of March, we go to the planning commission to start that review process. Those plans have been submitted to the county. So that's the scheduled date for our planning commission hearing. And then the groundbreaking event is happening is scheduled for April 9th.
Can you say the 20th, right, of February?
Yes, is the first, is the community meeting.
In the six o'clock, or?
Yeah.
In this room here. And the date that you didn't know until Kim just said it is we are, no, we wanted to say that tonight. The groundbreaking will be April 9th at 5:30 prior to your city council meeting. We'll, of course, give you more details to that, but we have planned for that. And that will be onsite.
Shovels will be provided, so you don't have to bring your own. Don't worry about that part. Also, on the horizon then, we're tracking on schedule with the, the design-build team is tracking on schedule. Site demolition then, following the groundbreaking, site demolition work is scheduled to start April 18th. The piers and footings are going in in May. I know both our contractor, as well as some people on council, have been kind of going, ooh, what's in that ground? That's always the biggest unknown in a project, is what can't you see yet? And so we'll know a lot more by May, because they'll be digging and installing those piers and foundations. Building permit will be submitted in, so the contractor is doing a two-phase permit, one for the demolition and piers and footings, and then a subsequent a phase two permit for the building itself. So that second permit is going to go in in May as well, mid-May. And then they'll start construction on the rest of the building. It'll just follow on. The building should be enclosed by the end of this year, and county, the city staff will be able to move in in March of 2020. So we're still debating whether the drawers will include paper clips in the contractor's scope or not, but I think we can convince him to include them. But that's the schedule. We're tracking on schedule. On the budget side, we continue to do kind of tests as this work is developed, and the contracting, contractor, the design-build team learns more about the building and the design, and having, pulling together the details. The project remains tracking on the building costs, consistent with the budget they've been approved for, as well as some of the bigger unknowns. There was a lot of off-site infrastructure work that is included in their budget based on a kind of, not a back-of-the-envoil, but a pretty good guesstimate of the off-site water and other types of utilities, off-site work that would be required as part of this project. And so far, all of those costs have been, now we have more design on that, and those costs are tracking. The one remaining piece on that is the water improvements. The design work is still finishing up on that. But the good news on that front, that some of those unknowns are starting to be closed out as well. So what else?
We are on project budget, project time. Everything is moving forward, newsly. So we are very excited about the next open house. Was there any other questions that you have at this time?
We have a decent heating and cooling system.
Yes. We've got to lift that up.
As I shiver here, yeah. Check that division, because that's one we should pay attention to.
The roof is great. The HVAC is great. The employee's morale is 100% improved. They've been involved with the floor design. And I think it's something for us to really start to get excited about, because it is going to happen.
That's a slightly pitched roof.
Yes.
So when were we going to make the decision on the additional, what, $200,000? Is that going to be community-driven?
The enhancements, yeah. It's going to be community-driven, yes.
Okay.
And I don't think we're going to make the decisions at the open house, but we want to see what else they'd like that to be part of there. So for example, if you want to have display cases in the lobby for the historical society to put artifacts in, that would come out of that enhancement bucket. That's the kind of feedback that we'd like to get at the next open house.
Okay. But that's not for furniture, regular furniture?
We have a budget already in the guaranteed maximum price for FFNE, which is furniture, fixtures, and
Equipment.
Equipment. Yes. Okay.
Kim, I don't know if you can answer this. Do we have, you have footprints here that are, I'm assuming we're concept still for the most part, but do we have, do you have square footages for each of the components?
I don't for each piece, but it is generally, it's slightly above what the original scope was. But they, again, they've managed to kind of keep it within the budget. Is there any, I can definitely look up.
It's fine. I can, I'll circle back with Jackie. You can just find it.
I do want to highlight one change that I feel is significant, because there's been a lot of internal negotiations between the police department and city hall. And I think when you originally saw that, you saw public restrooms over here. And we were able to move those here to allow city hall to have a little bit more room there. And the police department willingly gave up their fitness room opportunity over here in the police department. There's a little bit of room here for them to have training. But we originally programmed in a fitness room for the police department, and that's not going to be in the final design. So we moved the public bathrooms over on this side, just to allow us to be able to open this up a little bit more. Other than that, all of the programming needs that the city had identified since 2016, where footages have been incorporated into this space project. And then, of course, the enhancements are what the city council picked with that.
And I'll just pick up a little bit on the enhancements. So the concept, or the actual construction type, is a tilt-up concrete building that'll be painted. And they're still trying to figure out kind of what level of surface treatment is going to work best from a design perspective, as well as within the budget. But what you're seeing in the, in the, this rendering, well, it's a couple of things. Here's where your enhancement money went. So you could see that wood piece coming out, again, in addition to what Jackie said, the skewed lobby as opposed to a long corridor between the two buildings. So you got that. And then this entryway gets to pop out, have the treatment of the wood in the front. And then wood will extend through the lobby, and then out the other side of the building. So the architect has taken that enhancement and really helped use it to pull the site together, and in really selected locations. So that's, that's part of what the prior enhancements have gone to. So they just happen to be in these illustrations.
I have a question on the storage part. Because I know we're lacking that with, especially with the historic society, where they've been looking to try to source some things. What all are you intending to use those for?
So this storage over here is also going to be the city's incident operation center. So there's going to be emergency equipment that needs to be stored in those areas there. We are aware of the historical society's needs. And if there was extra space, I would make it more office space in city hall. We are so tight that even if I wanted to think about, let's say if I wanted to bring planning services in-house, we did not plan for that. So we are, we are so tight and being very conservative on the design on this city hall side, I'm afraid we're not going to have enough storage. We're probably going to have to rent a storage unit to store city records off-site, because we don't have enough storage internally either.
Okay.
But we feel like a good compromise is to tell the historical society, show us what nice artifacts you want displayed artistically in our public space. And then they wouldn't have to be in storage. And so that's kind of what we're working with them on thoughtfully, to come up with certain milestones throughout Gladstone's history that they would, they would like to have present there in those public spaces, and also in the community room.
Okay.
So I'm going to be, I'd be remiss if I don't mention this. So to me, we've got to go, we're going to go over the details of the police facility. But I'm hoping, given the size of the police facility versus the city hall facility, that that's 100% utilized space in that particular facility. So I'm hoping that we're going to have a conversation with the chief, and with you, and others involved in the project, to ensure that that's 100% utilized space. Because to Councilor Nish's point, if we have underutilization of that bigger space, we could store things there. It's a big, it's a big space. And I think when you're seeing it in scale, it's a little bit bigger than I thought it was.
We're happy to show you the details.
And I'm not, you know, that's not my area. I'm not a police officer or a police chief, so I don't know what's needed in an essential facility like that. But I do know that for both the citizens and those of us representing the citizens, it needs to be 100% utilized.
Correct.
I would assume my counselor, my fellow colleagues up here would agree.
Yeah. Yeah. And I just want to remind that in 2016, the city hired another firm to do the programming needs for that. And so this is not something that we just dreamed up this way.
Believe me, I'm not.
And if we need to present that historical timeline, and how we got to this, we can do that.
I think it's going to probably be a good idea. And I'm not saying that anybody's doing anything out of the planning process. It's just the utilization space. So we're just hoping that that's going to be assured.
Councilor Reisner?
No.
You look like you're going to...
No.
No, no, no. I understand where you're coming from, because I'm thinking of several
other police departments, you know, that I've visited or, you know, worked at that, you know, where like, dang, you know, wish we'd done this, you know, a couple of years later. And I know that staff has taken tours, and some of them have worked at other, other places. And, but I think, you know, once sitting down with the chief, that your concerns will probably be, will be...
Yeah, I'm not that concerned about it. Just, as we're talking about possibly leasing space someplace else.
The space looks really big, with lots of offices.
Yeah, I'm looking at this, and I was trying to be tactful.
My first thought was the current property building.
And that's a big piece. And right now, our property evidence is offsite. It's going in that space. And so I think it's all very justifiable.
Please don't take it. I want to make sure, I want to clear this up and make sure everybody, please don't take this as like an affront or that I'm challenging it at all, city administrator best. I'm not. I'm just hoping that we're, that we're managing the space, and it's going to be utilized at those levels. And I'm sure the chief will tell me, and all of us, that yes, it will, and we'll go through the details.
I know people are thinking where they are now. And it works, not really, but they're thinking that it works, versus this. Huge difference.
But then again, too, I mean, kind of a perspective, Milwaukee, PDU for years was in a two-story house, you know, there by the crick. And then, you know, they were able to move into a nicer facility, which was safer for not only them, but, you know, the public.
I think your comments are valid, and that's why, right out front, wanted to say we want to sit down with you and go through that.
I appreciate it.
Because I think once you see it, you'll be like...
You and I both realize, we want the answers so that we can answer the questions. And that's it. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
The next item is number 13, accepting the Oregon State Marine Board grant in the amount of $133,000. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Public Works Director Jim Wynott is on vacation this week. And typically, we would have put this on the consent agenda, but I think it's important for me to note a couple of items for you. No grant money is free money. And we do recommend that the city council accept this grant, but I also want to make sure that you understand, we don't have the resources to manage this project internally. And so for, in order for us to accept this grant, we need to hire a project manager. And we are able to do that if we, it is all right with the city council. The Parks has about $124,000 in a improvement project fund account. Part of this grant means that we have to take $10,000 to match that $133,000 that we're receiving. The Parks Board is aware that that $10,000 is going to come out of their improvement pot. However, for us to get a project manager, it's going to cost approximately $5,000. And we're going to have to also use that from the Parks improvement budget to get a project manager. We have very specific public contracting rules, and accepting this grant means that the city has to do the formal bidding process, has to do the procurement process, has to ensure all the bid bonds, do the solicitation, make sure bond payments are done. And so if we can hire a project manager to oversee the formal bidding process, then once we get the contractor on board, some of our staff also has to do some in-kind work. I think we have a thoughtful plan on how we can make this happen. But I wanted to make sure that the city council understood that we were going to bring on an outside project manager to help us with the formal bidding process. And as you also saw in the staff report, we have two weeks to apply for the third phase of the grant by March 1st. So we are very limited on our time and resources. We will hire a project manager. If the city council wants us to move forward with this, then that's what our plan is to do to make this happen.
Well, being on the Parks and Rec Board, I'm the liaison, sitting in on the last couple of meetings, Parks had recommended, when the grant was first submitted, to match it up to $25,000, because they were told that $10,000 probably wouldn't cut it, and they wouldn't be considered. So they said $25,000 would be the max. And they're thrilled last night to hear that it was only 10. So there's that $15,000 buffer there. I just don't think that that would be a problem, bringing on a project manager.
We have to hire a project manager pretty quickly. I mean, right?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
That's quick. Yeah.
So...
I'm assuming you have some, some people in mind?
Well, we are doing some outreach as we speak, but we have an in-water work period, and we have to apply for the third phase of this. And quite honestly, if we don't accept it, we probably will lose credibility with the state, and it would be difficult for us to get this in the future. So we're trying to get creative, and we don't want to be in the same situation that we found ourselves when we had the incident at the senior center with the roof. We tried to do it ourselves. We tried to do it ourselves. And so, we're trying to get ahead of this. And I think we have a plan to do that. But, it's going to mean spending some more of that money that's in that improvement line item for the Parks.
Yeah, they re-looked at their budget. They were wanting to spend a lot more than $120,000. But, they pulled it back and just went with a couple things.
Of the $5,000 for the project management, is that the project management cost?
Yes, that's what it would cost the city to hire a project manager.
Okay. So, theoretically, the $133,000 will be, part of it will be taken with the $5,000?
Well, no. We get $133,000, but we have to put in $10,000 of our own money. So, it's 143 total. And now, I'm increasing it by $5,000 more because we need to hire somebody to manage it.
The city's cost to be $15,000.
Correct, yeah.
So, where's that coming from again, if I may ask?
The Parks Budget has an improvement project line item.
The capital?
Yeah.
So, why aren't we bringing it out of contractual professional services?
We can move that around. But, bottom line is it's going to come out of that pot of money.
Right.
And we just wanted to make sure that the Parks Board understands that that's really the fund that we're going to be taking that out of.
Because we've got, according to this from end of the year, we've got $18,000 still sitting.
Well, Jim probably has a lot of that allocated for other services.
And I believe the reason that they're doing this boat dock grant is because it has outlived its purpose by many, many years. And it's considered unsafe. And that is such a huge draw. I mean, that is the draw to Melton Bar.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Any more questions for staff? Does someone want to make a motion? To accept the grant? Do you want us to also add in the $5,000 in our wording?
I think that if you just accept the grant and authorize the city administrator hire a project manager within my spending authority, then that would be great.
There are all moved that we accept the Oregon State Marine Board Grant in the amount of $133,000. And I guess it's up to discretion on the additional matching grant monies from the city.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Accepted. Thank you. Next item is item number 14, Appointment to the Budget Committee.
You have one vacant four-year term. You have three applications. Steve Bergeron, Bruce Harmon, and Catherine Mason. And I think I'll have the city recorder just ask individually your choice. Mayor Stempel?
Katie Mason.
Counselor Ripley?
No, on all three.
Counselor Neese?
No, on all three. I've had people approach and I think I'd like to have it opened for longer.
Counselor Matt Tracy?
Bruce Harmon.
Counselor Reisner?
Steve Bergeron.
Counselor Tracy Todd?
Mr. Bergeron.
Counselor Mercero?
No one.
Not a majority. So, we're sort of running into the same issue we had before. Before you can appoint somebody, that person's got to have a majority support from the council. So, an option tonight would be to consider, is it Mr. Bergeron, who received two votes and have the full council vote either yea or nay on Mr. Bergeron? That's one approach. The other approach would be, at least in terms of my legal advice to you, would be to continue to solicit members for the Budget Committee. Because as I talked about last time, you really need, if there are willing people that want to participate, you have a seven-member council. The Budget Committee, as far as citizen members go, should be seven people.
So, an option is to go ahead and revote on Mr. Bergeron?
That's the way I would suggest going forward since that's the only person that got more than one vote.
Okay. Then why don't we do that? Kimmy, want to call the roll? Is that all right?
Mayor Stempel?
Mr. Bergeron, yes.
Counselor Ripley?
No.
Counselor Neese?
No.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
All right, so that's a majority.
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
All right, Mr. Bergeron. All right, next item is number 15, Adoption of the 2019-2021 City of Gladstone Budget Calendar.
You, our interim Finance Director Kathy will walk you through what we've proposing for this year.
As the start of the 2020-2021 biennial budget process, we've put together the budget calendar and requesting your approval of it tonight. Basically, starting off with tonight at the city council meeting goes into the publication requirements. The first Budget Committee meeting will be strictly for the budget process orientation for new members of the Budget Committee and the city council. Anybody who would care to join us?
However, I would like to add that city attorney Ashley Driscoll would like to do an ethics overview for the entire Budget Committee. So, please plan on attending that.
And that would be what, about 30 minutes-ish?
On the ethics, yes. The balance of the presentation won't be that much longer either.
That was on the 6th?
On March 18th at 5:30.
And we'll move to on March 25th to the Budget Committee meeting. And that's where the proposed budget will be presented to you, preceded with the budget message and then review of the proposed budget. We'll be able to receive public comment. It will be well-advertised, as you can see by the preceding publications. And you will either choose to approve the budget that night or we have a second meeting scheduled just in case. If the budget is not meeting, or excuse me, budget is not approved that night, then we will publish for the second meeting with again, public comment on April 25th. May 30th, we'll do the publication of the notice of the budget hearing and the financial summaries. June 11th, we'll bring it back to you for adoption. And June 25th, submit to the county. And July 1st, go forward.
On your budget meetings, would you like to start at 5:30 or 6:00 or 6:30?
We've got some people working, so how does that work for them?
I would say 6:00, probably. 6:00 PM work? Yeah. Those seem to go for a while.
I don't know if you're aware, but the March 25th meeting starts spring break for Oregon.
No.
Well, there's going to be a lot of people not around.
On the Budget Committee?
Or just public in general.
Right. I mean, we're thoughtfully trying to vet through intermittently between other city committee meetings as well.
I'm just throwing that out there. Let you know.
Are you going to be gone? Is that why?
No, actually, I'm- No, I'm leaving in a windy, so I will be here.
And we will be videoing our budget meetings so people could access them online.
For a Budget Committee, if someone couldn't attend, can they submit concerns or questions via email or letter?
You mean like-
Is that accepted?
Yeah, they can do that. They can't vote if they're not present. But, they can participate.
I'm speaking more public.
Oh, sure.
That's accepted, okay. So, that's an option too, if they want to participate in some way. All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. That we move forward on our Budget Committee and our dates and times.
To adopt the 2019-2021 City of Gladstone Budget Calendar.
I guess I better read it from here. Yes.
Motion was made by Counselor Neese, seconded by Counselor Todd. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Thank you very much. So, the next item is the council liaison appointments. And I put a copy on all of your desk. I talked to most of you, a couple I had not. So, do you guys have any questions, concerns?
I still have a question regarding why the police department and the fire department is not on the list. It's been on there for the last eight years I've been here.
Mostly because it was a staff, not a committee. And that's why it was pulled off.
Yeah, but there is a committee to go to, like in the fire department.
There's association meeting. It's not really a committee.
Two meetings, actually.
The business meeting, which is staff. And then the association meeting, which is staff.
Correct.
I didn't want to overburden people and just felt that was a staff issue and there really wasn't anything for us to participate in.
Well, I was just making a note, I don't agree with that. There's some citizens that don't believe we should have liaisons. I am one that would like to see liaisons. But, I believe those are two of the most important departments in the city and should be considered.
Not having a liaison does not mean that you cannot attend. And if you want to attend, that would be wonderful. I'm sure they'd love it. I know you have in the past. So, if it's something that you want to continue, that's great.
Maybe it's a point of contact type scenario. You know, still a liaison, but not official capacity. Sort of like the school board.
Right.
So, Mayor, if I might, my understanding on the liaison appointments, is that what we're doing is we're gathering information and bringing it back to the governing body and also acting as conduit to work with the departments. To Counselor Mercero's point, if it's in a kind of a de facto or whatever position, then does he still, he, Counselor Mercero or anyone else at the times these meetings, are they going to be able to use that opportunity as still conveying information back and forth? And is it going to be in an official?
Well, that's kind of why it was pulled off because it's, they're not advisory committees to us. They're staff.
Okay.
And we're liaisons to these, our committees and boards, because they're our advisory committees. And that connection is important.
Okay. Because I do hear Counselor Mercero, when he says that he wants to maintain a relationship, I'm just trying to figure out what the strength is going back and forth between the council and the two departments. And if it's of value, then maybe we should continue. I mean, I just propose that. I think the rest of the counselors could have a conversation about it.
Well, according to the mayor, there's not a value. I'm just saying there is.
Well, I disagree.
No.
But, I think what happens is that it just ends up being a focus for that particular person that meets with the fire chief, police chief, goes to maybe the business meeting for the fire department. And yes, I've attended those also, not as a liaison, but just as a counselor, which we all can do. I mean, I agree, those are a couple of the most important, well, all of our departments, all of our employees are important. And that's why I've, over the last few years, have suggested that we have a committee, a citizens committee that supports them. But, that hasn't generated any steam. So, the police chief and fire chief answer to the city administrator. They don't answer to us. Whereas, these committees, you know, traffic safety, parks and rec, those committees and boards answer to us. They don't answer to the city administrator.
Yeah, that's the difference. Any more discussion?
Yes. I'm concerned about you because I've noticed your name's on here on quite a few things. And I just don't want you to burn yourself out.
We're sharing the love.
So, because I was looking at that and I thought, well, that's a lot.
Well, hopefully, a couple of these will be wrapped up quickly, like the water tourism. So, that's just, I think, through April. The sewer, hopefully, will be wrapped up soon. So, yeah, those will be kind of winding down. And if anybody wants to help with regional committees, I am more than happy, more than happy to share that one.
Yeah, I mean, the business and civic, that's just, I mean, you have to have a lot of people to get all of those.
You do. And we've talked about making sure that we coordinate and really focus on economic development opportunities and how we can best approach that.
I have a happy reminder at your strategic planning that we talked about this annual work plan that your committees are supposed to be meeting in a joint work session with the council. And we agreed that instead of you having a work session with every committee, that whoever the liaison is, is going to go to that next meeting and put a work plan together. And then, at your March work session, present that. So, the Parks Board is having a joint work session with the council because they have a lot of projects they want to do. But, the rest of you at your next meeting with them are supposed to bring back their work plan to that.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we accept the council liaison appointment recommendations from Mayor Tammy Stempel.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we had someone from the audience wanted to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Yes.
Libby Wentz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Libby Wentz. And I will talk into the speaker because I hate it when I can't hear what's being said. I have a question and a couple of comments about the liaison specifically. Historically, as has been mentioned, there's always been one for the police and fire department. And I think there should continue to be one. Counselor Tracy kind of touched on it exactly why. It would be understood why the police department needed all of that space if there's a liaison that was on the council that could explain it. I think that, I think it's something that should not be discarded at this time for no apparent reason. Secondly, the reasons that I heard that it should be, it is not needed, I don't think are valid because the school board is not an advisory. The Clackamas County Water Tourism is not advisory. Will Ammit Falls Project is not advisory. And none of these answer to the city either. So, there is no reason why the fire and the police should not have a council liaison. And that is, I would like to know why they were left off. That would be my question. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was already addressed, so-
It was not addressed.
It was, that it was staff.
It was not brought up, that those are not advisory.
Right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion by Counselor Reisner. Do we have a second? Do you want to add the fire and police?
Mayor, my concern here is that, I think, a couple of things. I mean, I think that one of the things for both those departments is that if they feel they have a conduit to the council, it's not necessarily in a lobbying sense. it's not necessarily in a lobbying sense.
Okay.
But my feeling about this is that we continue to, I know that we're all busy, but I think if we continue to at least show the support and are able to have that information freely flowing between the two, not involving ourselves in bureaucratic staff management duties or details, but be able to at least have that conduit, I think it's healthy.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not stepping on your toes and going around you.
And that's why I'm saying with the qualifier, that it's not involved in the actual management of the department or involved where somebody's coming to a council member or a liaison and giving grievances or anything of that nature. And I don't know, I wasn't in that position, and quite frankly, my liaison position is actually required by the IGAA, if I'm not mistaken, for me to be on the water, or somebody to be on the Water Council, correct?
Yes.
So that's kind of, that's even a different liaison position. That's not really a liaison, I'm actually an active member of the board.
And same with the sewer.
Okay. And you're on sewer, and that's gonna go for a while, is it not?
I'm hoping not.
I mean, if you're, if you were asking for my opinion, I don't know if that you did.
Yes, yes.
I'm very secure with who I am and what I do. If a city councilor wants to be a liaison to a department head, I'm not concerned about operational interference. We're gonna have a new Police Chief and a new Fire Chief. I think with all the projects that we have going on, I could use help from the elected officials. I'm not afraid to say that. If I feel like it is going into operations, then I will have a discussion with the elected official. I wasn't here when this program was created, so I don't know the historical context of which the assignments were made. I will do whatever it is that you guys want me to do, but I'm very comfortable with a Police and Fire liaison as well.
Okay. The business meetings, those are fairly confidential. Is that something that we should participate in? Or should it just be more the general association meetings?
Well, I don't know that the business meetings are confidential. I think anything we do is open to the public.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Right.
I've been in for the last eight years, so.
Right, and, you know, a majority of you are participating in the recruitment process for a new Police and Fire Chief, and I think it's a good time to form those new relationships. So I'm not opposed. I will make work whatever it is that the council desires.
Okay, well, then I would say, yes, let's go ahead and do it, and I would like Tom, my recommendation would be to have Tom do it. He's been doing it for years, and he seems to have a really good relationship with both.
So you do both?
The Fire and Police.
The Fire and Police, yes.
Yes.
The other thing I was gonna mention is that the conduit goes two ways. It can go from the council to the department head to ask them questions or whatever, okay? The conduit can also go the other way, from the department head, to get some ideas or whatever, so.
All right, so does that sound fair to everybody?
I think if Tom's willing to do it.
And you're willing to do it, I'm assuming, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Would someone make a motion then with that modification? Or is there other concerns?
Do we make an amendment to this?
Say with the addition of the Fire and Police.
There's only been, there hasn't been a second, right?
No, not yet.
So who made the motion?
Neil did.
Neil did.
Withdraw it, and then somebody could re-move.
Or it dies for lack of a second.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor, may I make a motion to, a friendly amendment to Council Reisner's motion to move forward on the council liaison appointments to include both Police and Fire Department under Council Mercearo as a liaison? And I believe Council Reisner has to accept that friendly amendment?
Sure.
And I'll second it.
Motion was made by Councilor Tracy and Councilor Reisner, and seconded by Councilor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here we go. Awesome. Business carried forward.
So very quickly, I just wanted to give you an update on the Senior Center. As you've seen, we've been providing you photos, the lobby part restoration is almost complete. The restoration is almost complete also in the pool room, in the wellness room, and a final clean sweep is scheduled for Friday, and then we should be able to open those rooms back up by Friday. The main issue is still a piece of the roof above the kitchen component, and Kennedy Restoration has been in contact with the roofer that they believe can come in and complete that roofing component, and then they'll start on the kitchen. I don't have a timeline of when the kitchen will be back open and operational, but the other pieces of the Senior Center should be complete within the next week and a half. And then also in the packet, I gave you a copy of what the immediate, immediate next steps are on the business, or the downtown revitalization plan, just so that you understood of what specific items Mr. Southgate is going to implement from the report that he gave the council on January 8th. And then I also highlighted the two that I'm taking on, which of course is the Trolley Trail Bridge feasibility study, and then the library. There are still three tasks identified in pink in your packet that I'm working to secure someone to help us with those elements. So I just wanted to keep you informed of where we are in those immediate next steps for the downtown revitalization plan. And that's all I have.
Any questions? All right, next is business from the audience.
I have none.
All right, next is business from the council. So I will start it with an update on the Water Environmental Services, also called West Governance. So for a couple of years, the county and the cities that make up our sewer district have been duking it out over who's gonna be in charge, the governance agreement. We've spent so many Saturday mornings and evenings and emails and phone calls trying to come up with a path forward. We have a really good group at the table now. Three months ago, four months ago, the group decided to hire Oregon Consensus to look at it and interview all the stakeholders to see if we had a path forward, and they came back and said yes, and they felt that we all really had the same goals, and that we could work together in providing some type of a government, governance strategy. So that was a $30,000 lift, and the county paid for that 100%. Well, now we're on phase two, which is actually the fine tuning it and coming up with an actual agreement. This will be probably about $30,000 as well. The cities have said that they would like to have some skin in the game, and Oregon City's offered to put $5,000 towards it. I would like us to put $2,000 towards it. The other cities are gonna step up and pay something also, and then the county will shoulder the rest of it. But I think we need to do this to move forward, 'cause currently, we do not have any representation on the Sewer District Governance Board. We have one gentleman who's lived in Gladstone for two years. I have met him for coffee once. No one else has met him, and he was assigned by West. So that is our only voice.
Under that, yeah.
So this governance agreement is so important. We need to have a say in how the plant is run and what the cost to our citizens is going to be. Any discussion?
Could you, I'm sorry. Could you remind us again, the buy-in on the match for the $2,000?
It's gonna be about $30,000 total. Oregon City has agreed to put in $5,000, and I would like to put in a token $2,000, and the other cities are gonna put in some variation of that. We're the smaller ones, so they understood that we would come up with a smaller amount.
Thank you.
Any questions? I guess, do we need a motion to give up $2,000?
Yes.
Could someone please make a motion?
Can I ask a question?
You can.
This is the $2,000, you know, it gives us some sort of investment into it. Does it give us enough of investment into it? I mean, are we still sort of?
No, I think we're fine. I think $2,000 would be fine.
It's token at this point.
It's token.
You know what I mean.
Okay.
The only question I had, Mayor, was, not to exceed a mount, but did they feel like that this next phase with Oregon Solution was gonna be the end?
Oregon Consensus.
Sorry, Oregon Consensus was gonna be the end, that there's not gonna be another piece of that?
Yeah.
Mayor, I'll move that we give $2,000 to phase two of the West Governance Council, sorry.
Governance, I don't know, whatever you want to call it.
Governance Council Monthly Meeting, where you guys are trying to build consensus.
The governance agreement.
Agreement.
Consensus. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further, a motion was made by Councilor Tracy and seconded by Councilor Todd. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, so next is business from the council, so we'll start Ms. Council Mercearo.
I have nothing.
All right. Councilor Todd.
I don't think I have anything. I just want to let you guys know that after the strategic planning session, I just felt really good with where we're at, and I'm really excited. Thank you.
My turn?
Council Reisner.
Sure. As we saw tonight, and as I know everybody up here, and I'm assuming everybody in the room is aware that we have some awesome employees for the city that day in and day out do great things. And I'd like to echo City Administrator Betts' email from back last month stating how our employees serve and are committed to, or to what they do and to the citizens. And like I say, they're day in and day out, they go above and beyond their specified duties, which is why I'd like to ask your support in asking Administrator Betts and her staff to determine if there's money, funds in our current budget to give them a seven and a half percent raise going back to January 1st of this year.
And the seven and a half percent raise is from, is that?
Oh, the number's what we gave City Administrator Betts.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, like I say, we had them out saving lives tonight. We saw where they did some back Christmas Eve. You go to page 6 dash 2 in our packet, where Public Works is digging around live wires, and we had a Medal of Valor winner from the Police Department.
Can you repeat what you asked? Citywide, is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm asking for full-time, part-time, on-call staff. I would like to exclude our Police and Fire Department chiefs that are being recruited and contract employees.
I think I need to consult with legal, because we have negotiations currently.
With the represented employees? Where do you stand in those? I'm sorry, I'm unaware of.
They just started last week, so it's almost, just, I'm not sure.
Is Ashley working with you, or are you doing it with, is anybody from our office working with you?
No.
No, okay. Let's, let's, let's.
Can we put it upon as an agenda item in the future?
Well, an executive session.
Okay.
So my thought is above and beyond, 'cause I mean, Administrator Betts got a 2% raise last year, like with everybody else, and then we gave her last fall another seven and a half.
I appreciate the spirit, Council. I do. I think that having been involved in represented bargaining units, I know it's not quite, I mean, we've got one or two units right now that are in negotiation.
But as you recall, we also did a compensation study discussion with the city council, and nonrepresented have received increases. And so what I'm not understanding is if you're talking in addition to that as well. So I think it warrants maybe having an executive session conversation.
Okay. Is that all right?
Is that, will that work, Mayor, to?
All I get is I'll have to. I mean, I'm.
No, I mean, your statement is noted. We're just trying to administratively understand how to process that.
Yeah, that's, and it's.
I think in spirit, it's good. I appreciate that.
I don't like executive sessions, but that's definitely the appropriate place for this.
Okay.
All right.
Well, if we could do that.
Thank you for thinking of it.
Thank you.
Well, they deserve it.
Anything else?
No, have a safe President's Day on Monday.
Council Tracy?
I'll try to be brief. Really, once again, I believe Director Why Not is knocking the ball out of the park, showing us exactly the condition of our infrastructure. And I, again, encourage, I know that he's getting ready to do an open house at some point in time. Again, I encourage him to do so and to bring forward all of these photographs that they're getting, that they're taking as they're doing this work. He has an unenviable task, and, you know, I think Director Why Not approaches this with care, and he also approaches it with prudence, but he's done a, I think, done a phenomenal job. So I appreciate, like I said, going back to the spirit of your motion, I appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to say is that the Clackamas, North Clackamas County Water Commission is working hard. We've changed seats. We have a new chair, and I'm now serving as Vice Chair. Nothing really scary at the moment, but we are really focusing on the externalities or the actually external forces that are gonna be on that river, and we've got some work ahead of us. So we have so much control over it, and beyond that, we don't have much control. So we're gonna try to keep everybody briefed, and I'll keep the mayor and the councilors briefed, as well as you, City Administrator Betts.
Council Neese?
I have nothing at this time.
Council Reisner, please.
I have nothing.
All right, I just have a couple of things. First, to mirror what these guys said, thank you to Public Works for being rock stars during our snow and ice storm. I drive from Gladstone to Sherwood, and the only decent part of that drive was in Gladstone, so that was wonderful. Thank you. And I saw the signs, they were so prepared, they were ready to start shutting down streets. It was great. And thank you for putting on that strategic planning session. That was wonderful. I think it really was one of the better ones that I've attended. John just hit that out of the ballpark. We have, the Historical Society's been busy. Kim Huey is the historian, and she just completed a new book, an Arcadia book on the history of Gladstone. And it's going out for print, and it should be available, I think, in maybe six weeks. We're very excited. A bunch of brand-new pictures that no one's seen, some really interesting.
Wonderful.
Gladstone is an interesting place, let me tell you. And she knows it all. Volunteer opportunities in town, the food pantry is always needing volunteers. We are increasing the number of families served every week. Also, the Rotary, we need people to help with the Rotary and the Kiwanis. And that's all that I had. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So move? Second.
Motion was made by Council Reisner, seconded in tandem by Councilor Tracy and Councilor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at 8:40 PM.